...scenes. A Stanford University study seems to back that claim, finding there were 4,000 fewer hit-and-run crashes in the law's first year.
There's lessons to be learned, and we will continue to win with DACA, immigration reform, dignity, and rights for all working men and women. Much gracias.
At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The councilman's late wife, Ruby Sadio, died of breast cancer in 2002. Denim Day is known as the day people wear jeans to work, but it's got a deeper meaning. It's a stand against sexual violence and all forms of sexual harassment. Anna Marcos takes us to the rally.
Rape culture ends, and it all ends today. I don't need to say no, because I never said yes.
A spirited rally on this Denim Day. The Sexual Violence Prevention Campaign has added meaning this year, as it joins the Me Too movement with a strong message: Sexual harassment, not on my watch. And a mission: To end rape culture now. The voices of the victims span all races and cultures.
As early as three years old, I think that's as far as I can remember, I remember being sexually abused. I remember my stepfather coming into my room at night, fondling me, touching me. I remember him making me wash up and shower, because I needed to smell good for him.
For a long time, our society has normalized the rape culture. The story goes, "The man is my cousin-in-law, and I am six years old. His penis is a strange creature in his hands."
It made me think that I was unworthy, that I was inadequate, that I was tainted, that I was undeserving of love, that I was unlovable, and I actually believed that it was my fault. What must be wrong with me, that from an early age, that I had to endure this?
City leaders also taking a stand, declaring City Hall a harassment-free zone. They are working to make harassment and sexual assaults easier to report in the City Hall workplace.
I want to say to the men as well, this is your issue too. This is not a women's issue. This is a human issue.
Your silence is complicity in this situation, and it needs to end now. If you see it, you must report it.
Time's up, men. And it's been up for a long time.
But the stories of sexual violence don't just end on the steps of City Hall. They're everywhere, including out here on the streets. City leaders say 91% of women who end up on the street have been victims of physical or sexual violence.
I've been living outside for 27 years. And ever since I got here, I'm being harassed, and everything.
But for those marking this day, wearing jeans and speaking out, just might start to turn things around.
The story goes, every woman has a story.
And I matter, and if I can use my voice to make it so this doesn't happen to another person, then so be it.
From big to small to smaller yet, the change has begun. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
L.A. Metro officials also joined the rally, declaring the metro transit system a harassment-free zone as well. Well, May is the month dedicated to paying tribute to the generations of Jewish Americans who have helped form the fabric of American history, culture, and society. Los Angeles has been home to large populations of the Jewish community. Rasha Goel has more.
Yana, I'm at City Hall, where officials kicked off Jewish Heritage Month, celebrating and recognizing Jewish history and culture. And here's an interesting fact, if you didn't know, but Mayor Eric Garcetti is the city's first elected Jewish mayor.
I'm the first elected Jewish mayor, and very proud of that. But we, as was mentioned, we have so many firsts that were here in Los Angeles. Our first Jew, Jacob Frankfurt, arrived in 1841. Morris Goodman was the first Jewish city council member, and that was in 1850. This was a town that didn't really care, back then, about whether you were Jewish or not. It opened itself up.
Throughout the 1920s and '30s, about 40% of the population in Boyle Heights was Jewish. The core of the community was Brooklyn Avenue, since renamed Caesar Chavez Avenue, which hosted a string of Jewish-owned businesses, including the original Cantor's Deli.
The 5th Council District is also proud of giving birth to Betsedek Legal Services on Fairfax Avenue, on being the first home in Los Angeles to many Holocaust survivors, as well as immigrants from the former Soviet Union and Iran, as well as the location of the Museum of Tolerance and the Simon Wiesenthal Center.
The overwhelming story of Jews in L.A. is one of triumph. Whether it is the great storytelling culture brought from the Old Country that founded many of the major film studios that would ultimately shape global culture, or the love of scholarship that founded many of the great institutions here in Los Angeles.
Councilmember Paul Krikorian talked about the similarities between the Armenian and Jewish communities.
A common history of two ancient peoples who were primarily diasporic peoples throughout their history, who longed for a free and independent homeland, and kept that as a vision and a dream that maintained us united over the course of centuries. Both of our communities found refuge here in Los Angeles.
A lot of folks, when you think about Jewish heritage, people get confused, because, yes, it's a religion. Judaism is a religion, but it's also a culture. It's also an ethnicity.
An exhibit is on display for the month of May in City Hall, highlighting Jewish history and the contributions in Los Angeles.
And it's so beautiful that the city has come to recognize that, and have come together to celebrate the Jewish community and all of its accomplishments.
Jewish Heritage Month recognizes the unique and colorful past of the community while celebrating the present and future. From City Hall, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Are you finally ready to move out of your apartment and buy that first house? Well, for a lot of people, this isn't easy, but free workshops sponsored by the city are helping to make the American dream of owning a home come true. Gil Reyes has more.
You gotta copy your credit report.
Like these other renters intently listening, Terri Bistline says she's finally doing it. She's finally buying a house.
Because the rents are exorbitant today, and it makes sense to invest in your own home than to pay somebody else.
This seminar, hosted by the group called New Economics for Women, showed people how to buy that first home, offering tips on how to get a mortgage, building the necessary savings to secure loans, and avoiding predatory lenders. The workshop took place at Councilman Curran Price's district office in South Los Angeles.
Many families believe that homeownership is out of their reach, because they don't have the down payment, or maybe they don't have the credit profile to be able to get a home loan. And so I would invite those individuals to attend one of our workshops, so that they can learn more about the programs available to them.
L.A. City also offers low-income, first-time home buyers up to $60,000 in financial aid if they qualify. More free seminars are coming up. Log on to neweconomicsforwomen.org/homebuyer to register. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The L.A. Rams' Clete for Character program inspires young, sports-minded kids from the inner city. And what bigger inspiration than former NFL player Jonathan Franklin? Anna Marcos brings us his inspiring story.
Former NFL football player Jonathan Franklin was once an inspiration out in the field. But even off the field, he is still inspiring his community in South L.A. to dream big and become something. The former UCLA guard and running back got drafted into the NFL, where he played with the Green Bay Packers.
Essentially, Jonathan Franklin grew up in South Central L.A. and went to Dorsey High School.
Against all odds, he got to play in the big time. Then, a severe spinal injury sidelined Franklin, but he wasn't done with football. He now works for the L.A. Rams, giving back to the community by inspiring kids like this team of young varsity football players at Locke High School in South L.A., teaching them that while football may be their life, there is also life after football.
I want you to know your worth goes beyond just the game of football.
Franklin is giving out gear and shoes, and some words of wisdom, as part of the Rams' Clete for Character program.
The reason of that is to instill in the power of education, character, and goal-setting within their lives, to look beyond just the game of football, and self-worth, and who they are, and confidence why they're playing this game.
And in this empowerment session, the young men get to talk about their own dreams and goals.
I just want to be successful, so that my younger siblings could always have some ball back.
It's a blessing to actually have people who've been to where I want to get, to actually come and talk to us about how their life is going, and the stuff that they've been through to get to where I want to be in the future.
I think it's amazing that the Rams are looking at Locke High School, because it's like a ghetto school, but it's good that they're looking at us.
You know, we're an inner-city school, kind of underlooked, so they just want to show some support.
That support comes with hope. Hope that even a kid from an inner-city school in South L.A. can dream big and make it big, and still be making it big even after his goals have changed. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The Rams' Clete for Character program visits schools throughout the L.A. USD system. Metro officials promote worker safety. The city celebrates Cinco de Mayo, and a dangerous intersection in North Hollywood just got a lot safer. All these stories in City Beat. In commemoration of National Safety Week in the city, metro officials called on construction workers and contractors to always be mindful of their safety as they perform various infrastructure projects in the region. Metro's Purple Line Extension Project, Crenshaw-LAX Transit Corridor, and the Regional Connector, among other projects.
We're highlighting making safe choices, thinking before you act, and act in a safe way.
The Latino community came out to celebrate Cinco de Mayo in the city. One celebration took place at the Los Angeles Historic State Park in downtown L.A., featuring traditional live music and food, along with dozens of other vendors. Cinco de Mayo is an annual celebration held on May 5th. The date is observed to commemorate the Mexican Army's unlikely victory over the French Empire at the Battle of Puebla on May 5th, 1862.
I feel that we should all get together and celebrate Cinco de Mayo, and be proud of our heritage.
City Councilmember Paul Krikorian activated a new traffic signal at Witsit Avenue and Voe Street in North Hollywood, an intersection often used by neighborhood kids to access the city's Witsit Soccer Complex. The new signal is the result of funds Councilmember Krikorian secured to improve pedestrian and bicycle safety in the San Fernando Valley.
When you have a street with 17,000 cars a day, many of which are speeding and distracted, that creates a great danger for those kids who are trying to come to those parks. It's our responsibility to eliminate that danger, and make sure that they can utilize their park and enjoy their neighborhood in a safe way.
It's a day to create an impact for generations to come, while building a sustainable environment today. Rasha Goel has more on how Angelenos came together to help beautify their city on a tradition that's over 100 years old.
With shovels in hand, volunteers of all ages were ready to get their hands dirty as they planted new trees in celebration of Arbor Day. Arbor Day is an annual observance that celebrates the role of trees in our lives and promotes tree planting and care.
All of you are here, making a difference for future generations. A lot of people talk about community beautification. You're here today, making it happen. A lot of people talk about fighting against climate change. You're here today, making it happen. A lot of people talk about biodiversity. You're here, making that happen.
400 volunteers came out to plant 173 new trees in the North Hollywood area as part of a beautification project. The project will transform a concreted corridor into a greenway potted with drought-resistant street trees.
They help save energy, they help save money, they help save all kinds of things, just by planting a tree in your neighborhood and taking care of it. It's something really easy that you can do, that's great for your home value, it's great for the environment.
The planting is on a 1.6-mile stretch of Vinland Avenue between Oxnard Avenue and Strathairn Street.
We have all kinds of trees, lemon, lime trees, and we just want to make the city more beautiful.
Beautiful and sustainable for years to come. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
As a formal holiday, Arbor Day was first observed in 1872, but tree-planting festivals are as old as civilization. The tree has appeared throughout history and literature as the symbol of life. Well, here's your chance to spay or neuter your cat at no charge, come out for a senior citizen fair, and enjoy free harbor boat tours at the Port of L.A. All this and this week's things to do. If you own a cat or kitten, here's your chance to get them spayed or neutered for free. Throughout the month of May, L.A. Animal Services will be offering free cat spay-neuter certificates to all L.A. City residents, regardless of income levels. By taking advantage of free certificates for cats and kittens, the community will help stem the tide of pet overpopulation that L.A. Animal Services faces daily in each of the six service centers. By spaying or neutering your cat or kitten, you are helping L.A. Animal Services get one step closer to ending the Los Angeles community's pet overpopulation, and help L.A. Animal Services place more animals in permanent homes. To apply and receive a free certificate the same day, the public is encouraged to visit their nearest L.A. City Animal Services Center. L.A. City residents can now also apply for a free certificate online at laspayneuter.com. If you're a senior, don't miss the 10th Annual Senior Symposium and Job Fair. Spend the day visiting a variety of vendors and service providers. Take advantage of the many health screenings offered at no cost. Win a raffle prize donated by vendors in attendance. Listen to guest speakers and presentations, and get help in resume building. Meet agencies looking to hire, assist older adults or caregivers, or search for part-time or full-time opportunities. Call 818-705-2345 to RSVP. Free lunch and continental breakfast to those who RSVP. The Senior Fair takes place Saturday, May 19, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. at the One Generation Senior Enrichment Center, located at 18255 Victory Boulevard in Reseda. As part of World Trade Week, the Port of Los Angeles will host free harbor boat tours. The public tours are one hour and will depart every 30 minutes, from both Banning's Landing Community Center in Wilmington, and the Los Angeles Maritime Museum in San Pedro. For more than 90 years, World Trade Week, an initiative of the Los Angeles-area Chamber of Commerce, has been the nation's most extensive and unique program of its kind, dedicated to educating the public about the importance and benefits of global trade to the local and U.S. economy. Related events and programs are held throughout Southern California every year in May, coinciding with World Trade Month. The public boat tours take place on Saturday, May 19, from 10:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. For more, visit portoflos angeles.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
At LAX, we're taking important steps to stop the transport of men, women, and children into forced labor and commercial sex.
But we also need your help.
Educate yourself and learn to recognize the signs of human trafficking.
If you suspect human trafficking at LAX, or if you need help, alert the nearest airport employee or police officer.
Or contact the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Together, we can prevent human trafficking through LAX.
And help end this terrible crime.
Hi, I'm Kristy Oldham in Los Feliz. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Would you like a mustache for that?
It is Tuesday, May 15. I want to welcome you to City Hall. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. 11 members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Coretts moves, Ofero seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves, and Englander seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Let's all rise. We'll be led today by Mr. Englander, and our flag salute.
I'm honored. Thank you very much. If everyone will please put your right hand over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Englander.
It's like the first time you've ever...
Let's go to the multiple comments section. If I could get Antonio Ramirez to please come forward.
You want to talk to me about...
Miss Ramirez, you have items 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, and your general public comment. Ms. Ramirez, please come forward. In fact, as she's coming down, let's run quickly through the rest of the agenda.
Items 1 through 7 are items noticed for public hearing.
One moment, let me get my... Sorry.
Okay, one minute, Ms. Ramirez. Okay, do you have any cards? One minute, Ms. Ramirez, just wait. Any cards on those items?
There is a card on item 7.
Let's hold that, and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, let's move to the next section.
Items 8 through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, specials. I don't see any on these items. Let's open... 12 for Mr. Buscaino. On the rest of the items, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send item 10 forthwith.
So ordered.
Items 23 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Cards on items 25 through 30.
Let's hold those items. Prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much.
She gets three minutes.
Thank you very much. 25. I am in favor of events in L.A. However, your events have cost the taxpayers a phenomenal amount of money. And most of your events are held at Grand Park, where they shut the bathrooms, and the homeless have nowhere to go and bathe and shower or wash up. Furthermore, it costs us money. We're unable to get into most of these events. They do not profit, they do not help most of us, who are the middle-class homeless, impoverished America, even our beloved United States military veterans. They only help you to boost your political power. They only help you to boost your political power all the way up the corporate presidential seats, including our president pussy, Eric Garcetti here. What we're asking is you do the, do fundings and do these events only to stop the gangbanger. We have a gang epidemic and we have an unsafe city. We need to do something to stop the unsafeness, the uninhabitability in Los Angeles. Los Angeles stinks walking in LA. Nobody walks in LA. We need events like that. And number 26, I love the Asian people. God bless the Asian people. And for God's sake, will you tell the Asians to shut the bathroom when they go in and people are bathing? For God's sake, have some courtesy. The Asian people are wonderful, I love the events, but how does this help our crime in America? Please, Asians, help. You hire most of these gangbangers and wetbacks. Look at Mid-Wilshire Koreatown. It is a mess. The wetbacks and gangbangers that you hire are a filthy nasty mess.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, let's get on topic. Ms. Ramirez, you want to move to another item? Would you like, Ms. Ramirez, would you like to move to another item? That you could be on topic?
Thank you very much. I love the censorship. And number 28, goddamn, we are, we are funding these indigenous people who are robbing the city. We're going to celebrate their heritage. Why don't we celebrate American heritage? We got these pinchy thieves, pigs and thieves coming from Oaxaca, Chiapas, Central America. They're nothing more than free lizards.
Ms. Ramirez, you need, Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Ms. Ramirez, your time. Sergeants, sergeants. She's off subject? No, 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 Ms. Ramirez. No, Ms. Ramirez. No, Ms. Ramirez. Your time is up. I tried to stop you on three different occasions to get you, to get you, no, I gave you, I gave, Ms., okay, Ms. Ramirez, thank you. She is disrupting the meeting, Mr. City Attorneys. Sergeants, would you please show her, would you please show her out of the council chambers? Ms. Ramirez, please leave, sergeants. And, Mr. City Attorney, that, there's no more multiple comments, so that closes that section of public comment. Let's now take up, she's still disrupting the meeting.
Yes, Ms. Ramirez is continuing to shout as she leaves the chamber.
Okay, so now let's take up. Ms. Ramirez, you are disrupting this meeting.
She's continuing to shout and keep us from conducting our business.
Thank you.
As she is escorted out.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on items 25, 26, 28, 29, and 30. Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Haynes, Doug Haynes, I thought I saw him, please come forward. Item 27. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Doug Haynes. I'll try to be a little less animated than the prior speaker.
Wait, don't start his time. Wait a minute, Ms. Haynes. Shh. Yes, sir.
So this is item 27. The reason I wanted to speak on this is to thank Councilman O'Farrell for bringing it back. I got to say that as a member of two neighborhood councils, we're very frustrated with many of the actions that are being taken by the Centenary Planning Commission. I would hope that there might be some higher criteria for membership when you appoint these people. At the same hearing that evening, one of the commission members asked what a zone change is. There doesn't seem to be a lot of educational opportunity for them to understand planning issues that affect us in a very important way. So on this thing, again, thank you to the councilman for bringing this back. This is a very important issue. We appreciate that he's getting more engaged in the alcohol matter, and I know the police were very concerned by the action of the commission, and they want this reversed as well, although I won't speak for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
We're going to go to general public comment. If I could get Mr. Weiss, followed by Randall, followed by Mr. Walsh. Yes, Mr. Weiss.
Good morning, counsel. It's, last night I went to a meeting of the Hollywood Studio District Neighborhood Council. I was told, again, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. President, it would be nice if Mr. O'Farrell would be able to listen to these comments instead of shows.
Just make your comments, Mr. Weiss, just make your comments.
All right. My comment is, in terms of Mr. O'Farrell's refusal to listen to public comment, he has sent a representative only to three of the last neighborhood council meetings of the Hollywood Studios District Neighborhood Council in the last year. I'm not quite certain why he's unable to meet with people who may have a different opposing point of view. Clearly, he represents special interests and the developers have a nice voice in Mr. O'Farrell, but the tenants, I'm not concerned. My concern, Mr. President, is why not take care and deal and debate and discuss the concerns relative to the middle-class implosion? That was the debate we had in April of '07, Mr. President, when, at that point in time, we had you, we had Janice Hahn, we had Bill Rosendahl, working for the tenants. We don't have that now, we need it now.
Thank you, thank you. So is there Randall? Please come forward, Mr. Walsh. Please come forward. Would you give Ms. Randall? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm here about illegal vending. Can you hear me? What happened was, I have an illegal vending on my corner. I called the police, they said they can't do anything about it because of city council. The illegal vendor who has no license, no gloves, defecated in an alley by my house, called the police on me. They came out and arrested me for a battery, which is not true. They said, she told, I told the police, I did not even go near the woman. He said it didn't matter. She said I hit her. I told him, what about my rights? Right, this is the '77 Police Department. They said, told me I have no rights. That this woman is not legal in the country, she has no license. We're concerned about the health issue because they defecate and everything in the alleys by my home. I've been in the community for 18 years. I've been on the neighborhood council for seven years. So we were trying to stop so many illegal vendors coming, selling in our alley.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, HollywoodHighEnds.org. I have to say a few good words for you. Over there, I was physically attacked while I was sitting, speaking on the public comment, and they all laughed at it. The person who, the person who did it has an arrest record. I'm telling you right now that, as far as I'm concerned, the tunnel, the blue line is closing, the blue line is closing, the blue line is closing. I didn't see it in the LA Times, so it didn't happen. I'm telling you right now, the blue line will be closed next month. It will result in chaos. And do you give a shit? Do you people up here give a shit? No. The blue line is closing. Krikorian, say I'm a liar now. Say I'm a goddamn liar. Look.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, that closes general public comment, so we've, we've closed, Mr. City Attorney, the multi-section and general public comment. Mr. Coretts, I'd like to recognize you for our presentation for the day.
Good morning, colleagues. I'm here today with our colleague Mike Bonin to speak on behalf of our city's annual tradition of declaring May to be Older Americans Month. At this time, we recognize-
Let's give a round of applause for Older Americans Month. Mr. Sadio and myself can relate, all right?
Sadly, myself as well. At this time, we recognize older Americans for their invaluable contributions to Los Angeles and our nation. Older Americans Month was established by President John Kennedy in 1963, though he called it Senior Citizens Month. The name was later changed to Older Americans Month by President Jimmy Carter in 1980. And now Mike and I would like to present a short message from Mayor Garcetti on video, so if we could roll that.
Today, I'm joining the Dementia Friends Los Angeles Initiative. It's a part of a global movement to change how we think and talk about this disease and how we make a difference for people whose lives are touched by dementia and Alzheimer's. Alzheimer's is the fifth leading cause of death in California. Today, more than 1.6 million family caregivers support a loved one with dementia. We can expect those numbers to grow as our population ages. The number of Californians over 65 will nearly double by 2025. And here in LA County, we could see up to a 67% increase in the number of older people affected by Alzheimer's by 2030. We want Los Angeles to be the best place in America to grow older, which is why I launched the Purposeful Aging Initiative. Dementia Friends LA is a critical partner because we need to be prepared, and we need to do everything possible to support individuals and families affected by Alzheimer's and dementia. So please, consider joining me in becoming a dementia friend. Thank you.
Colleagues, as our mayor reminded us, the number of seniors is rapidly increasing in the city of Los Angeles, and with that increase, there's an increase in dementia and Alzheimer's. In California, more than half a million people are living with Alzheimer's disease or related dementia. All of us want to remain engaged and active with family, friends, and community over our lives. This desire is no different from the people living with dementia. But it's going to take action from each of us to make that possible. We're joined today by Barbara McLendon of Alzheimer's Greater Los Angeles, who is available for questions later, if you have any. The mayor has taken a pledge to be a dementia friend, as have all of our county supervisors, and now it is our turn. Last week, I took the pledge to be a dementia friend, and now I call on my 14 colleagues to take that pledge, to join the Dementia Friend Los Angeles Friends Initiative, because no one should have to be alone. And there's a flyer on each of your desks telling you how to do that. And now, one of the side effects of social isolation in our older adults is that they can be vulnerable to fraud and deception, and even the most nimble and sober mind who might be taken advantage of can be too proud to report it. So that is why we celebrate May 15th as Senior Fraud Awareness Day. We first declared May 15th as this day in 2013 because of the work of then-councilmember, the late Bill Rosendahl. May 15th was his birthday, and he was a staunch advocate for protecting seniors in the city, and so we continue the tradition of working with community organizations, like the Stop Senior Scam Acting Program, on educating the public on the important issue of senior fraud.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts, and thank you, colleagues, and thanks to everybody who's here with us today. It's an honor to take part in this acknowledgement today of Older Americans Month and of Senior Fraud Awareness Day, and to join in this effort to draw attention to dementia. You know, 80 is the new 30, and I see that every day at the gym where I'm getting outlifted and outpaced on an elliptical machine by a guy who's in his mid-70s. Our older residents in Los Angeles are strong and vital, and it's important for us to acknowledge and recognize and celebrate them in every way possible, and this is an important celebration in doing that. I'm particularly glad to join Mr. Coretts and Mr. Garcetti in being a dementia friend. It's an issue deeply personal to me. My grandfather, who was a brilliant man, a graduate of Harvard Law, a state legislator in Massachusetts, and a judge, in his older years, was struck by dementia, Alzheimer's, a hereditary condition his parents had suffered with. And he was so smart, he knew the dementia was coming on. And he was smart enough to mask it and hide it and make excuses and try to cover for it. And it was heartbreaking to watch his struggle with such a brutal thieving disease. And finally, a word, as Paul noted, today is Bill Rosendahl's birthday. Bill would have been celebrating by proclaiming, "Great, great, 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 great," and was very, very proud that we named the first Senior Fraud Awareness Day on his birthday, his last birthday in office. And he was, like I and like Paul, very touched and very moved by the incredible performances that Adrienne and her troupe puts on throughout Los Angeles. They do an absolutely phenomenal job educating people about the potential and the threat of scams against our seniors. And I just want to acknowledge, while Adrienne is here, that the troupe has had a couple losses this past year.
Yes, we have.
Hank and Rosalyn, yes?
Yes.
Yes, who were wonderful. Rosalyn, I remember specifically, she was one of the two judges who gave amazing performances, and we love the work they've done, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm going to introduce Adrienne Omansky, who runs, of course, the Senior Scams Awareness Program and community centers, and has worked with my office and Mike's office particularly for many years. But first, I want to mention that she works tirelessly to educate the public on this vital issue, and two months ago, she traveled to Washington DC and testified in front of the US Senate on the importance of protecting seniors from fraud. Congresswoman Karen Bass then introduced legislation declaring May 15th as National Senior Fraud Day, and the Senate has never had a day, week, or month like this. But now I actually have breaking news. Just a little while ago today, May 15th was designated Senior Fraud Awareness Day, Senior Fraud Awareness Week in the US Senate. So let's give her some applause for that.
And they're perpetuating senior fraud, senior fraud awareness in the US Senate.
I look forward to the president signing this into law, and in the meantime, Jacqueline Hamilton, senior counsel for Congresswoman Karen Bass, my good friend and former colleague, is joining us today to recognize Senior Fraud Awareness Day here in Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Coretts and Councilmember Bonin and City Council. The Congresswoman is very proud to have been working with Adrienne Omansky, the Stop Senior Scams Acting Program, to introduce that resolution and was proud to see it passed, and it's an example of how what you do as citizens really matters, because it probably wouldn't have happened but for the actions of these people. So in recognition of that, we'd like to thank you as the City Council for continuing to remember how important it is to draw attention to this, and we'd like to recognize the Stop Senior Scam Acting Program with a certificate on behalf of the Congresswoman. This is a growing and deeply concerning issue, and we'd like to call attention to the fact that there are city, county, and state resources that can help with aging and that can help with information about people who may have, be subject to scams, and to help try and remedy things after they've been subject to scams. So thank you very much, and on behalf of Congressmember Karen Bass, congratulations.
And give our best to the Congresswoman, would you please? Give her our best.
I definitely will. Thank you very much.
And please thank Karen for her great work on this as well. We appreciate it.
Mr. Coretts, I also have Mr. Price. Mr. Price, would you like to?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to salute the team as we celebrate this very important day and period. Our senior program, I think, does extraordinary jobs under the ABU leadership. Our senior program, I think, does extraordinary jobs under the ABU leadership, and we want to make sure that we continue doing this all over the city. We've had the pleasure of hosting the Senior Scam troupe at several of our senior luncheons at the convention center, Mr. President. We had almost 1,200 seniors there, and always a big hit and always an important message to tell. So, I just want to say, keep up the good work. We're proud of you. Thank you.
And so, we'd like to present a certificate to Adrienne Omansky and to her program, so she'd like to say a few words and accept it?
Welcome.
Thank you, Council President Wesson, Councilmembers Paul Corz and Mike Bonin. I was honored to be invited to testify before the United States Senate Committee on Aging on March 7th about the success and effectiveness of the Stop Senior Scams Acting Program peer-to-peer education model. Last year, our 28 seniors, ages 65 to 100, representing nine of the city council districts, brought our program to over 30 locations. We cannot have had the success without the support of the city council by providing us with transportation to get to most of these locations. Senior Medicare Patrol under California State Director Mickey Nizaki has given us materials in 10 languages that have educated your constituents. John Darnell has supported our program from its inception and has introduced our program to each of the council districts. For my testimony, I had to review over 1,000 responses from seniors we have met over the past nine years. These responses have helped us understand the true concerns and fears of older Americans in our community. We will continue our mission to stop senior scams ever changing our focus to meet the needs of older adults in Los Angeles. We are pleased to partner with the Los Angeles City Attorney and Los Angeles County District Attorney, Senior Medicare Patrol, Federal Trade Commission, with the help of our City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And, Mr. President, lastly, I would like to ask Laura Trejo, general manager of the Department of Aging, to accept this award as well, if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember.
My elevator ma- ma-
Laura Trejo, general manager, City of Los Angeles Department of Aging. I'm delighted to join you today in celebration of Older Americans Month. I bring good news to you. Our older workers employment program for homeless older adults has just been named a national innovative program in the United States, so we're very, very proud of that.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And so, it's our pleasure to declare Older Americans Month in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you. Colleagues, and to the city for making Los Angeles an age-friendly city. Thank you very much.
Okay. Going to wait a moment so that we can say farewell to our seniors. We'll go to 12. Mr. Buscagno? We're just going to, it's my understanding on item 12, the amendments have been circulated.
That is correct, Mr. President. Amendment 12(c) has been circulated and posted for council's consideration.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Fourth with, per Mr. Buscagno's request. Now, let's move to item seven. I'd like to recognize Mr. Blumenfield to set this up.
Great.
The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is the in-lie tree ordinance, and I wanted to, before we even take public testimony, I wanted to explain what this is and what this isn't, because there seems to be a lot of misinformation about this. Sort of both folks who are for it or against it are all for the same thing, which is we want a healthy tree canopy, we want to maximize the trees that we have, we want to prevent trees from being cut down, and I think this ordinance does that, and that's why TreePeople is here and others are here to support it. Just to be very clear, when a tree replacing or planting is required for new development, all trees that can be feasibly planted on-site are planted on-site. That is the law. That is not changing one iota. Now, the only thing that is changing is that currently, if the Board of Public Works or the City Department of Planning determines a tree cannot be planted on-site, what currently happens is that tree gets sent to a nursery, and in that nursery, that tree often dies and then is never planted. And that's a problem, because we're losing trees. We don't want to make it any easier to not plant trees. We want to plant more trees. So, someone from the planning department, Renee Dake Wilson, had this idea, she's a landscape architect, saying, since the trees are dying in the nursery, why don't we instead, instead of banking a tree in a nursery, let's bank dollars in that nursery, but let's use those dollars with the exact same procedures that we use to plant trees, meaning it has to be put back on-site, the Department of Public Works has all the different regulations. We don't change any of the regulations one iota. The idea is to have more trees get planted, allowing the banking of dollars rather than the physical banking of trees that are often dying is a way to improve our urban canopy. Nothing else has changed. This does not change any current city procedures related to issuing tree removal permits, the feasibility of planting a tree, or any of that. That all stays the same. The goal here is more trees and a healthy urban canopy. That said, Mr. President-
So, why don't we begin with public comment? I'd like to call Deborah Bloom, Robert Barkaloff, Jorge Castaneda. Yes, welcome.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Deborah Bloom. I'm the Senior Director of Policy and Research at TreePeople. As Councilman Blumenfield mentioned, there has been a lot of confusion about this, and it's unfortunate, because actually, this is solving one specific issue and is getting caught up in a lot of, I think, chaos that this in-lie fee ordinance is not addressing. So, as you said, nothing is changing from existing procedure. It doesn't change if a tree can be removed or not. It doesn't determine the replacement ratio if a tree is removed. It doesn't change the fact, if the tree is removed, that there's already a process in place of whether or not those trees can fit on the site. The only thing it does is have a fee to provide a way to pay for future replacement of these trees and has a plan and funding for three years of watering for it. I'd like to harness the momentum that we've been hearing against this and actually apply that to what will really change and help our urban forests.
Thank you. Thank you. Robert? Robert and Jorge, please come forward. Alina Wachtel, yes.
I'd like to urge the council to not vote on this. There is not enough information for it to be applied in a equal socio-economically manner. I'm born and raised in this city, and I see the disparity of tree loss in Boyle Heights, in South Los Angeles, and not so much in certain areas. And until those issues are addressed, I don't feel that this is a good reason to remove trees. I urge the council to vote, to not vote on this until some of the socio-economic disparity issues are addressed, the health issues and the mental health issues that go along with the tree loss in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please come forward and identify yourself, please.
Hi, yes, thank you. Excuse me, Jorge Castaneda, with the Coalition to Preserve L.A. I would also like to urge the council to not act on this item due to the following. It is a fact that Los Angeles has not conducted any of the following: a tree inventory, canopy cover calculation, tree species biodiversity assessment, or a proper estimate of the true cost to plant and maintain a tree for five years. Three years will not help a tree survive. There is no capacity or management ability to oversee compliance with this fee as currently written. The city is years away from having these things. This ordinance may very well devolve into a sort of get-out-of-jail-free card in which developers amp up the number of trees they destroy, a disaster in and of itself. So, again, we have none of the things that we need.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could get the next speaker, please. One second. Now, go ahead and identify yourself.
Hi, good morning. It's Alana Wachtel with the Coalition to Preserve L.A. And while the in-lie fee in theory is a good practice, and many cities around the country use it, we are urging that the council hold their vote until after more examination is done, that we get a urban tree management plan in place, and that we get a proper tree inventory to understand what species we have, how many trees we have, and where trees need to be planted. We are also urging that the city council consider raising the timeline for the maintenance of the trees to five years and to increase the fee beyond $2,600 per tree. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is-
Yes, you are?
Jackie Cerber, Council District Four.
And do we have David?
Yes.
And I'm looking for Jason James Gallegos and Lauren Luttrell. Go ahead.
Dear council, please do not vote yet. While this sounds like a good idea, and it may be, this proposed fee is much too low. The calculation did not take into consideration the ecological services trees provide us, such as reduced air pollution, stormwater control, and reduced energy consumption. These were completely ignored in the calculation of the fee. When mature trees are killed, we lose these benefits, costing not just the city money but individuals too. Why wasn't this taken into consideration with the proposed fee? It's very clear the fee should be much higher. Why is it that the developers are beginning a discount for residential properties at only $267 per tree? How is this going to cover maintenance for three years? Also, while other cities have this fee in place, they also have other strict policies in place. So, please, take a look at the process of tree valuation that the Arbiculture Society recommends to calculate how much each given tree is worth. Don't just give a flat rate for each tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne D'Antonio, just get in line, and I'm assuming we have David?
Yes, I'm David. As a homeowner in Sherman Oaks, I have seen the drastic changes in the tree canopy in our neighborhood due to unchecked development. On our block alone, which is only seven houses, developers have cut down three parkway trees over 80 feet tall in the past four years. Not a single effort has been made by the developers to remediate the vacancies left by the removed trees. Your current in-lie fee plan only charges $267 to developers for residential tree removal, which will not even come close to the replacement costs of the trees we are losing. Why are you giving discounts to developers that are making millions off their building projects but have no recourse for the permanent scarring they are leaving on L.A. landscapes? At this rate, in a few years, there will be no trees left, which is unacceptable. I strongly urge you to postpone this decision until a proper urban forestry plan is implemented.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gallego, Mr. Gallegos?
Yes, Jason Gallegos. I'm with the Boyle Heights Neighborhood Council. I serve as the Planning and Land Use Committee Chair, and I drafted the community impact statement that we submitted. The reason why I came today is I wanted to further elaborate as to what's going on in our neighborhood. As we see the developments going through their cycles, they're pushing the setbacks to the limits of their property. So, as they dig into the ground, as they develop their buildings, they're no longer able to replant the trees on-site, making it not possible, and putting the trees into the nursery. Our community impact statement could have gone either way, in support or opposed, but what we want is that the trees are retained within Boyle Heights. There is one of the suggestions on the item that they can be replaced throughout the city, but we need them within our community to combat the freeway-
Okay, Mr. Gallegos, you submitted a community impact statement.
Yes.
So, if you need, and the difference is, the neighborhood councils are part of this city government, and so you will be afforded, let's say, another minute. Does that give you enough time to wrap up?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so why don't we give him one more minute?
Okay. Sorry, I was rushing there. I needed-
No, just go on.
So, as I was saying, as the development goes on, the request that, to see, to see if it's more flexible to distribute throughout the city, we're surrounded by freeways. The trees provide a little bit of environmental mitigation to the impact that it causes. As you know, we have soil contamination, not just from exide, but from the freeway runoff. We're in need of more green, and if this gets distributed throughout the city, the trees that should be planted in our neighborhood, it's just going to make the situation worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Lauren Luttrell, and I wanted to ask that the vote on this be stalled until there has been more reporting and research into the proper fee or maintenance support that urban forestry needs-
Pull the mic up a little bit, we could hear you better.
Just some further efforts into fixing the issue, the fact that there's this tree with a whole bunch, or this lot with a whole bunch of trees failing and not enough urban forestry support to actually plant those trees. The fee in lieu of sending trees to their death is not really solving any problems, but I feel that there does need to be something that solves the issue. And the issue is that our urban forestry is declining. In 20 years, there are reports that show there will be no urban forest left, and that's a reality that I don't feel me as having a son can take a responsible stance on that. So, please consider it further.
Thank you. And if I can get Max Kanter and Lynette Campay or Campy and Sandy Patton. Is, Max, is that Sandy behind you? Okay. Please identify- Please identify yourself. The floor is yours.
I need the extra time because we have a CIS on file. Greater Valley Glen Neighborhood Council, Joanne DeAntonio.
Okay, so why don't you speak and then we'll see how it goes and if you need-
Well, I have more than a minute, so I need to at least do-
Just relax. Why don't you just start off and then I'll, I'll get us through this. So you start and we'll take it from there.
I just didn't want to be interrupted, that's all. Okay. I'm Joanne DeAntonio, Sustainability Representative for the Greater Valley Glen Neighborhood Council and serve on their Government Relations Committee. I'm also Chair of the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance Trees Committee. Um, honorable members of the city council, our mayor tells us the trees are the lungs of the city, yet this ordinance in its present form may jeopardize this, uh, may jeopardize our capacity to breathe. Uh, nearly 200 trees got planted on Vineland in North Hollywood in one day on Arbor Day under a grant from Cal Fire. It was not rocket science. It did not take that long. Why are there unplanted trees in the city tree lot? Instruct Public Works to plant any trees the developer provides the city. Let's not make it easier for developers to take out trees by merely paying a fee. Is it because we don't know where to plant them? Well, this may be likely because Los Angeles is the only major city without an urban forestry master plan. The Greater Valley Glen Council voted unanimously that we need an urban forestry management plan before we remove mature trees and collect in-lu fees. We have to consider how many trees get removed for all sorts of reasons. Starting in 2018, the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance lists by neighborhood council the tree removal requests for all reasons: driveway relocation, sidewalk repair, street widening, metro, et cetera. And we started to supply photos of many of these are mature trees. We make it easy for people to watch the decline of our canopy and hopefully try to intervene. Takes a lot of years to grow mature trees, and no one is keeping track of precious canopy loss. Mature trees live on groundwater. New trees do not offer the same ecosystem services like purifying air-
I'll give you another 30 seconds to wrap that up.
Okay, and mitigating heat island effect. And we do make this trade-off and somehow really do plant trees. Will the new trees survive? It is our experience that it takes more than three years of maintenance to keep a tree alive. When it is really hot, I still have to water a tree I planted four years ago. Some of the tree fees collected will only be $267 for the removal of a mature tree. Councilman Ru said in committee that he has to use his discretionary funds for tree maintenance. Is that what the whole council is prepared to do? Or do you want to request a detailed report?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
I'm Max Kanter, and I'm a sustainable landscape maintenance professional. I'm here to offer you some perspective in tree planting and maintenance. The goal of the in-lu fee is to get as many trees in the ground as possible, which is great, but Los Angeles City does not have a robust tree care plan or a big enough urban forest management budget to ensure these trees, uh, will mature. I can guarantee without a proper maintenance plan, we'll end up with thousands of failed trees, more dead trees. The fee as it stands does not adequately reflect the human hours, water, and resources required to maintain our trees, both old and new. I urge you to think deeper into what a robust urban tree care plan could be before just aimlessly planting trees. If we could execute a tree care plan as robust as our renewable energy plan, we'd be the envy of the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and identify. Ms. Patton, right?
Yes, Sandy Patton, thank you. I also encourage the council to hold off on this vote, um, that L.A. doesn't have a master urban forest plan and that we aren't looking at other leadership cities that do. Pasadena, which is our neighbor right here, um, has an excellent plan and we should be taking information from them. We, we're lacking that. And while some cities do have a tree replacement in-lu fee, those cities also have strict tree protection ordinances and strong plans for healthy forests. Los Angeles does not. We don't have an urban forest, an urban forest plan, or the proper, proper infrastructure, or the sufficient equipment for increased tree maintenance. Without structure, the money collected by the in-lu fee is subject to mismanagement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lynette?
Um, good morning, President Wilson and members of the council. Lynette Campy, speaking on behalf of the Community Forest Advisory Committee. Community Forest Advisory Committee is an advisory board to the City of Los Angeles appointed by the various council districts. It's comprised of tree professionals and urban forestry certified arborists, community activists, landscape architects. We strongly support this measure. It is a positive move forward to improve over the current situation where trees are containerized and do not provide the benefits that they would otherwise provide to the city. Um, trees in the ground are what we need. Trees in the ground are what are able to reach the potential and provide the infrastructure benefits, the aesthetic and, and health and, um, economic benefits that a tree can provide. I agree we need a inventory and I suggest that be addressed through the budget process and added to the budget for the Urban Forestry Division. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And before we continue with this conversation, we just got some very special visitors here. Can you tell us what, can, uh, we get a camera on the kids in the back? Kids, would you stand up? Let's recognize our young visitors. They're from where, where they're from?
Our mother of good-
Our mother of good something or other. Let's give them a, a round of applause. And somebody, give me the name so I can, what was it? Our mother of good council? All right, give them another round of applause. Welcome, kids. Now that we've done that, I'd like to recognize, uh, Mr. Coretts.
My, my office has received lots of emails on this subject, so I, I do have a few questions. I appreciate all the effort that, uh, Mr. Blumenfield and his staff have put in, uh, getting us to this point. Um, do we have, uh, staff that can come up to the table and answer questions? Any staff here?
I believe here they are.
Hi, Fernando Campos, Executive Officer with the Board of Public Works. I'm joined also by our chief forest, or, uh, forester, uh, Tim Tyson.
So, a- as I understand the problem we're trying to address, we can't plant our trees fast enough from our nursery to keep them from dying before we plant them. Is that the main thing that we're trying to deal with here?
Yes.
Any way that we can plant them faster so that doesn't happen?
As you know, we put a budget request in for a planting crew, which was, uh, semi-approved as far as using targeted local hiring, and that's going to help us, uh, plant equally amongst all 15 council districts, because the Bureau has to do everything fairly. Uh, as far as the nonprofits go, as far as planting, they work with the separate council offices and plant in their, in their respective areas. I'm sorry.
Yeah, and if I can add to that also, Fernando Campos, again, with Executive Officer, it's, it's, it's about planting the tree in the ground, and sometimes the trees that go into the nursery, the quality of the tree is not exactly what we're looking for. Sometimes the size of the tree is also not the size that we're looking for. So it's not about not planting the tree. Uh, it's sometimes not being able to plant the tree because the quality or the size or the type of species, um, is not available, readily available for us to actually plant the tree.
Now, is, is there any way for us, um, rather than maintaining a nursery and having a bunch of trees dying, for us to buy the trees from existing nurseries when we actually need them?
That's actually what this cash-in-lu is all about.
This is exactly what we're trying to do.
So the money can go into a fund, and once we know exactly where all the trees are going to be planted, we can have a planting event, pull the money out, buy exactly what species is needed, and plant those trees.
And how are we assured that the replacement trees are planted in the vicinity of where the other trees are removed?
Well, the city planning has a Quimby Law. Uh, there are certain trees for certain buckets. I think I'll let, uh, Mr. Campos talk to you about that.
Absolutely. So we do have a process in place in which we will work closely with the Bureau of Street Services, along with our Office of Community Beautification and our 13 nonprofit organizations that we partner with for planting trees throughout the entire city. So to go back to your questions in regards to making sure that we're planting the trees right where they belong, we will be working with our Bureau of Street Services, coming up with an actual planting, uh, planting plan, so that we can put these trees back into the ground. Ideally for us to plant trees in a series, uh, or in clusters, if you will, that would be the most economical, most efficient way for us to actually plant these trees, as opposed to just planting a tree in one location. So the idea behind the in-lu fee would allow us to not only delineate between the public right-of-way trees and also planting trees, but being able to come up with a more comprehensive planning, uh, planting plan, where we can actually plant these trees in a more, uh, efficient manner.
So i- if we do that, how do we make sure that we're actually planting additional trees, rather than coming up with a better revenue stream for the trees that we were already going to plant? How do we make sure this results in actual additional trees?
The, the intent, the intent behind the in-lu ordinance is not to do additional trees, it's to actually plant the trees that are supposed to be replaced back based on our four-to-one or two-to-one replacement policy. So for every tree that goes out or removed, we have to plant two. So the whole idea is to make sure that we're, uh, applying our policy and we're being consistent with that. So this in-lu fee will pay for that additional tree or two trees, whatever the replacement requirement is.
But we, we do have a system to make sure that these are additional trees, so-
Absolutely.
If a particular set of trees weren't removed, then there wouldn't be the replacement trees.
Correct.
Okay. Um, how do we make sure that the in-lu fee is a last resort and that the developer has to do everything they can to not remove the trees in the first place? Or to, to replace them on-site, at the exact location?
Yeah, council member, that's an excellent question. I'll talk about the policy itself, um, and some of the, uh, wrote, uh, some of the processes that we have in place at the policy level, and then I'll turn it over to Tim to talk about the operational side of the House. But in terms of the policy, to make sure that we are, making sure that we're not abusing this or making it easier for a developer to remove a tree, they do have to go through two, two processes. One, they have to come to the Board of Public Works to receive approval for the tree removal permit. Two, if it's a planting tree, then it needs to go to the Planning Commission, uh, for the approval, or the Executive Director, uh, for approval. So in those respects, the policy itself will require a high-level or governing body to make that decision. Uh, in regards to the operational side of the House, I'll turn it over to Tim Tyson, who could, who can better, uh, illustrate what he goes through in terms of making a recommendation to the Board to either approve or deny a permit request.
Yes, Councilman, um, we actually have to go out and inspect the development site. We determine, we do our measurements, and we go back at the end to make sure, once all the utilities are in of those measurements, to ensure that every possible tree that can go back in at that development on, in the public right-of-way does. Also, we can verify for city planning what other significant trees would be on the private property side, that city planning has, uh, requirements for them to replant, uh, other significant trees on a one-to-one basis within the property.
Well, I, I have more questions, but I'll ask them on the next round. I do want to express my concern that we're removing trees at an alarming rate, and that if we remove 300-year-old heritage trees and replace them with new little saplings, I think we're going to leave ourselves, uh, environmentally in, in a difficult spot.
Thank you. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I want to concur with, uh, Mr. Coretts' sentiment and thank him for the questions. Our urban forest is under assault in Los Angeles. Uh, it is, uh, at least to the common eye, diminishing and imperiled in Los Angeles. And, uh, I don't think that we do nearly a good enough job protecting it. And I don't think anybody on either side of this issue out here thinks that we do a good enough job protecting it. And the, I think the question before us today is whether or not what is proposed makes the situation a little bit better, a little bit worse, or the same. On that general question, I find it hard to disagree with the assessment of tree people or the Community Forest Advisory Committee. Those are the sort of, you know, expert outside eyes that, that I tend to trust on that question. But the question then becomes, is it making it a little bit better, or could we make it this much better? And I'm not sure that we're making it as, as better as we could be. So I've got a, a, a couple of questions. I appreciate everything Mr. Coretts asked. Uh, I'm, I have a question about how the fee was set. A number of the speakers asked, and frankly, tree people in, in their letter of support enumerated a number of different concerns, and one of them was about how we factored or how we determined the fee, uh, and why we didn't factor in things such as the, the cost or the value of air pollutant removal, or the public health benefits, or the urban cooling effects, um, or the, the carbon sequestration.
Yeah, excellent question, um, council member. We did hire a independent consultant, NBS, to come in into a fee study before we actually proposed this fee. Based on their professional opinion, they did look at a series of things in terms of the procurement of the tree, the cost of the replacement of the tree, staking, guarding the tree, maintaining the tree, making sure that we're watering the tree for three years. Uh, they did look at the actual cost it would actually, uh, be borne to us if the city were to plant those trees themselves. They did not look at it through a programmatic lens, if you will, in terms of the air pollution or other extended, uh, circumstances. We can always ask the consultant to go back to look at what those fee elements would be and whether they would be allowed or not allowed to be added into the fee. The proposal before you is to actually move this forward. I think it, it does codify exactly what we're trying to do. It provides an additional option, uh, for developers or private citizens or private residents that are doing, uh, a development project. It does make it easier for, uh, for the City of L.A. to make sure that the trees are going in the ground, and that's the main goal behind this. Um, but to go back to your question, we did look at a series of elements for the cost.
Why, why didn't we ask for those programmatic elements the first time?
The, the main purpose behind this was to make sure that we're doing a cost recovery of the tree plant itself. So for every tree that we remove, that we plant back into the ground, how much is the city on the hook, if you will, or has to pay to replant that tree? We didn't look at other circumstances in terms of air pollution, um-
I, I know we did. I'm, I'm wondering why? Was there a, was, was it considered, or was there a conscious decision not to? Was there a pushback from legal counsel or something?
No consideration at the time. There was nothing driving why we couldn't do it. It was just a matter of how do we set that fee and how much, how much cost is it to plant that tree and how can we recover that cost if the city were to plant that tree itself?
So, to me, that's the, that, that makes the difference between the gap between is this tiny bit better, or is this a decent amount better? It's still going to not be a great system that needs significant overhaul, and we're addressing some of that in, in some of the considerations we're doing in budget today.
And this is not going to fix the whole entire problem. The main thing behind this is that it's moving in the right direction. It's a baby step towards the right direction. Could it be bigger step? I agree with you. I think we could.
It's a baby step, but it could be a toddler step. And my, my, my concern is that, yes, we can go back and ask them to do that additional study, but I know the, the process of bureaucracy in this building, and if we approve this today and then ask them to, to do the additional study, that's going to be three years. It's going to be three years, and I don't think anybody can, can, can argue otherwise credibly. If we hold off on this until that study gets done, then that study's going to get done a hell of a lot quicker. And frankly, I think that's the way it should be factored in. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Bonin, I hope I don't sound repetitive of some of the things that, that you just asked, but, um, let me say first that, um, I think the concept of the in-lu fee, and I know some people have concerns that they've expressed today, um, but I think the concept of it is an excellent concept that will solve a real problem that we've suffered with for years, and that is this idea of just buying a tiny little stick tree, delivering it to a lot. It's very easy for a developer to do, and their obligation is done. That's a ridiculous system that has failed. Um, so I think the idea of a development fee, if it is robust enough, first of all, makes a lot of sense, but second, it, it doesn't make it easier for a developer. A, a fee actually will make it harder for a developer to take out existing trees if it is robust enough. But that brings me to question number one. But that brings me to question number one that I have, and then I'll get into some larger, more strategic thoughts. But I'm having trouble understanding why the residential fee is a tenth of the development tree planting requirement fee and how that can pencil out in terms of being fair to both the commercial property owner and not subsidizing a residential property owner with the fee to take out trees. So, that's number one. And number two, perhaps you could tell us what percentage of the city's parcels or, you know, in terms of street miles or whatever, what percentage of the city fits into the category of residential property of four units or less?
Thank you, Councilmember. Again, Fernando Campos. The fee itself was established or was driven by and informed by the fee study itself. The residential fee, the reduced residential fee at $267, that's before you, that was a desire of the Board of Public Works to provide a relief, if you will, to those property owners that are doing development projects that are four units or less. So, that was their way, the Board's way of providing that relief so that it would be sufficient enough for those private residents to actually pay the in-lu fee.
Sure.
The development was set at the actual cost, which is the $2,600 ballpark.
That's what I need to know. So, the larger fee is at the actual cost, assuming three years of watering, not assuming some of the environmental benefits and other things that we talked about. But that is the actual cost.
Correct.
So, for residential properties, even including apartment buildings of four units or less, we are only charging one-tenth of the actual cost.
Right.
So, we are essentially subsidizing 90% of the value of that tree replacement policy.
That is correct, and that's actually what happens now. When we send the tree to the nursery, the tree gets procured by the permuti, if you will.
It may be what we're doing now, but I've already, you know, acknowledged what we're doing now is a failure. And so, subsidizing residential properties to take out their trees and give them a discount to do it, to me, is not a policy that is going to discourage tree removal. It may be better than what we have now because what we have now is a failure. So, that's an issue I have with the fee amount. But let me, if I can, Mr. President, just one other point. The second point is, what will the fee be spent on? And I think this goes to what many of the people have spoken about, and that is our lack of an urban forestry management plan, our lack of a tree inventory, our lack of a tree cover analysis, our lack of any real strategic plan for our urban forest at all, which has been a lingering problem that many of us have fought over for at least a half a decade now, and we still don't have action on that. And I was so frustrated with this fact that, as you will recall, during our budget hearings, I moved to take all of urban forestry's money away and put it in the unappropriated balance until this gets done. Because it's just unacceptable that this council, and we're not going to do that, I think I made my point clear, but we're not going to do that. But look, this council adopted my motion in September of 2015 to require a report from the CAO to recommend new policies for consideration of existing parkway trees prior to approving plans for new garages, driveways, and curb cuts. This council approved an instruction of the CAO asking for recommendations for increased fines and penalties for removing street trees without permits. In 2016, this council instructed the Bureau of Street Services to report with an accounting of the net losses and increases in tree canopy as a result of its removal and replacement policies. This council instructed Street Services in 2016 to develop and report with an urban forestry management plan backed by relevant data that will result in a more sustainable urban forest with greater diversity and so on. These were my motions from five years ago, and we still don't have responses. So, I can't, as good an idea as this fee in-lu is, I'm struggling with the concept of putting money into a black hole when we don't have any plan with what is going to be done with that money yet, at least no plan that's been put before this council and the public for its consideration. So, I think it's a great idea. I think we should move forward with this. But my two concerns are, number one, is this development fee enough? Number two, why do we still not have an urban forestry management plan and strategic plan so that we know what the money will be spent on? Those are my two concerns.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want to go back to Mr. Blumanfield.
Thank you very much. I couldn't agree with my colleagues more when it comes to the need for tree inventory, for tree specimen biodiversity, for getting an urban forestry plan. These things are woefully needed, and they've been woefully underfunded. It's one of the reasons why in this budget, we're actually, we're recommending an extra $2.2 million today, this afternoon. We're going to be pushing for that to add, to do precisely these things because we are all frustrated, we've had it up here, with not having the urban forestry that we need and that we want. It is the one branch of this city that has not been brought back up to pre-recession levels. It's the least funded of all of the departments. It's about 30% of what it was, and we need to fix that. And we're going to fix that to some extent through the budget process. And I know the Chair has been very active on that. I've been very active on that, and that's what we need to do. But when it comes to this very minor thing about the in-lu fee in the rare circumstances when you have to basically either send a twig to be banked or you're going to send a stack of cash to be banked, it just doesn't make sense to keep allowing these twigs to be sent to the bank, to the nursery, to die. So, my question for the Board here is, what happens if we delay, if we delay this, let's say, until we have, we hold this little idea hostage until we can get all the things that we want on urban forestry? How many trees will die in the nursery in the meantime?
Councilmember, I don't have the exact quantity, but I can tell you from the last two, three years that we've been tracking this issue in terms of how many trees have been going to the nursery. Over the last three years, we have sent a little over 300 trees to the nursery, and our goal is to plant every single tree back into the ground. And we have codified the policy of the two-to-one replacement. In that policy, we have actually made it a mandate and a policy requirement to have a 24-inch box tree to go back in the ground. So, no more twigs, no more five gallons, no more 10 gallons. We want these trees to be a little bit more mature so that they can survive the planting. In terms of the actual trees themselves, the cost of delaying this today, one, we would have to go back and do an additional study or additional research for the study that would end up costing us more, that could end up being another nine months to 18-month delay, possibly three years. I don't know. I don't think it'll be three years, but it'll be at least a good six to nine-month delay just to have the consultant come back out there and look at all these other elements. In addition to that, we'll continue to send these trees to the nursery. I know, working with Tim Tyson and also the Planning Department, all three departments, all three of us are passionate about making sure that these trees are in the ground. Our Board of Public Works is passionate, making sure that every tree gets into the ground whenever it's possible and whenever it's feasible to do so. Tim Tyson will always provide testimony to the Board to make sure that those trees do get in the ground. So, to go back to your question, the practice of sending the trees to the nursery will still be an option. We will try to do our best not to do it and encourage our Board of Public Works to approve the trees to go back in the ground, but it could add up to another 100 or so trees.
So, that's really the only thing that is before us, is, I mean, if we allow this to move forward, we prevent some of these trees from dying in the nursery, or we hold it hostage to the bigger issues of which we all agree on, what we need to do on these bigger issues. And in fact, in terms of the amount, the dollars per tree, we asked you in committee, is this the maximum dollars you could get? You did the consultant study. We said we want to have that seen back in three months or six months because we want that number to be as high as it possibly can. And for you to do whatever legally you can in terms of these studies to get the highest number you can so that we're getting the most dollars. But colleagues, my concern is, if we delay this and we hold it hostage to all of our good policy ideas that we want to see, then during that interim time, more trees are going to go to the nursery and they're going to die. This is a tiny little thing. This is not solving our problems in urban forestry. This is this tiny little notion, as my colleague said, that will make it slightly better so that a few trees won't die by going to the nursery and they'll be able to be banked. It doesn't change any of the underlying policies of when you can take a tree out, where you can take a tree out. I agree, we should try to maximize those policies and work on those. It's one of the reasons why we have all this extra money in urban forestry this year is because we want you guys to do that. We want to see more trees. So, did you want to comment, Mr. Tyson?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. Make no mistake, the Urban Forestry Division also wants these things. Without an urban forestry management plan in one of the largest cities in the country, doesn't make sense, as well as the tree inventory. And you can't make a management plan without a tree inventory. What will you manage if you don't have the inventory? So, make no mistake, we all want these things, and as far as the reports back, I'm working on those, Councilmen. They were prior to me. I'm doing my best. I got three or four of them and not much time to do them, but I'd like to do them properly. And we have requested these budget requests, as you all know, for these reasons. And we didn't ask for too much. We asked for startups to get it going. As city plants put together a $100,000 grant to start a urban forestry management plan, which will tell us what we don't have and what we do have so that we can go forward with filling in the blanks of making that urban forestry management plan. So, that's actually happening. As far as the one goes with the penalties and the fines, I worked with Mr. Lorenzen, as you all well know who Mr. Ron Lorenzen is, a couple of years back, on ACE citations for public right-of-way trees. And I'm working with Mr. Ted Jordan, who's his counsel, who's sitting here right now, to go back into what happened with that, to see where we need to go from there. So, these things are being worked on, make no mistake.
So, we are working on the reports. And I think to go back to your original question, Councilman, the delay, if you were to hold, if this council wanted to hold and make those changes, it would probably be about an 18-month delay and possibly additional funding for us to go back to the consultant and then many more trees. Our goal, again, is to have every tree in the ground.
Counselmembers, if I might, very briefly. David Michelson and Ted Jordan with the Office of the City Attorney. The City Attorney's Office prepared and transmitted the ordinance. The ordinance is approved as deformed in legality. It makes changes to city law. We strongly recommend in the City Attorney's Office that changes not be made on the fly to the ordinance itself. Instead, to the extent that one or both of these motions are adopted, we'd suggest sending it back to committee so language can be appropriately inserted into the ordinance, properly vetted by our office, and then approved as deformed in legality and transmitted back to your body, which can be done very quickly. But again, we discourage doing the changes on the fly here on the floor.
Thank you.
So, that would be our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. Let me recognize Ms. Rodriguez.
You know, colleagues, I really appreciate a lot of the conversations and Mr. Krikorian and all the, you know, the historical background of how you've raised this issue and how unfortunately it's continued to get kicked down the road. And when we talk about, some of the issues that we raised in committee were very, you know, they were raised and communicated with many of the individuals that took time out to come and address this issue today in that we don't want to have a situation where all of a sudden we're collecting all of these fees and that we still have a pot of money without it getting spent and actually putting trees into the ground, and I think that's part of our bigger conversation. I wanted to assure, and I have an amendment that I've put forward along with Councilman Blumanfield, to help assure that we can actually have an approval process that comes to council through a report so that we can actually see that these monies are being expended and so that we can actually assure that these trees are getting planted. Because what we don't want to see, and it's what I raised in committee, is what we don't want to see is that we're collecting fees and not expending them as we should. That is the problem with whether we take a tree and allow it to go to the nursery and sit there and fail or whether we actually collect fees and that it continues not to go spent. I think there's still a lot of opportunity for improvement as it comes to this tree in-lu fee, particularly because if we were able to plant these trees, we would have planted them in the radius to begin with, and we wouldn't have the circumstance that we're dealing with today. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, Mr. City Attorney, and I think what I would rather see as an amendment to address what I think would help be some of the mechanism where we could assure that these items are continuing to remain on your radar, that we're communicating with our offices so that we can get these trees planted in our respective areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caretz. Mr. Caretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've heard a lot of issues of concern today, and so the report backs that we're expecting, I think, are critical. A plan for the plantings we want, an option to base requirements on canopy size and not just the number of removed trees, and a long-term tree monitoring system. Also, the unofficial list of approved replacement trees from UFD is quite questionable. They include the Brisbane Box, the African Fern Pine, the Pink Trumpet, the Chinese Elm, the Chinese Pistach, and the Crepe Myrtle. Many of these trees are short-lived, all of them are exotics, and they're out of step with our biodiversity goals of building habitat for animals and birds and insects. So, this list has to be altered. Just as important, this afternoon, the Budget Committee is looking towards increasing the budget for our overall tree program, including hiring a tree czar. That also is critical. Also, a few months ago, I introduced a motion to strengthen the protected tree ordinance, which includes heritage trees, and I look forward to hearing that soon in Mr. Blumanfield's committee. All this together, the six-month report back, the budget increases for urban forestry, and what I know is Mr. Blumanfield's commitment to getting this issue right gives me some comfort. So, I will continue to listen and maintain an open mind about whether we need to pass a management plan first or not. My concern about not doing that, though, is that the management plan will show up two years from now, three years from now. So, I think we do need some method to hold the department's feet to the fire. At the same time, I don't want to have a bunch of our trees die while we're waiting to reach that point. So, I'm listening for a good solution to that.
Okay. Mr. Bonin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Caretz, I'm in roughly the same place as you are. This is a baby step. I just feel not having done the broader fee is a really blown opportunity to have done this a lot better. The part that troubles me most is what Mr. Krikorian teased out as being the 90% discount for the residential properties of four units or smaller. And I didn't get an answer, and maybe we don't know offhand, what percentage of the city that actually represents. Do we know?
I do not have an answer for that.
Because for me, maybe this is different in different parts of the city. The people who are purchasing the properties in my district that are four units or smaller, a lot of them are big capital companies. And they're coming in and they're tearing down a nice little bungalow or a 900-foot home, and they are tearing down trees and they're putting in a huge box, even under our mansionization rules. They're putting in these huge boxes. And it just feels like this is assisting them and rewarding them in doing that. And I understand it's a big city, different neighborhoods are different. That may not be the dynamic elsewhere, but it certainly is the dynamic in my district. And that troubles me a lot, thinking that the fee is a blown opportunity because it's not big enough is my first level consideration. My second is that this discounted fee of $260 just seems like a reward for folks who are of considerable resources coming in and simply by the fact that they are building that bigger box in the first place are doing damage to the environment. And it's just, that bothers me, and that's gnawing at me.
Mr. Blumanfield, maybe to close?
Well, to ask a question related to that, currently, how much does it cost them, a developer like Mr. Bonin described, under the current situation, how much would it cost him to send a tree to the nursery?
Approximately $245, $250.
So, as far as they go, it's a wash. I mean, I agree. The number should...
I mean, I agree, the number should be much higher. And we wanna make that number higher. We brought this up in committee and said you had this fee, this study, and that was the highest number you could get. We asked you to come back in several months to basically relook at that fee, and I think we should relook at that fee. The question today before us is, do we hold everything up or do we allow this to move forward so at least on the larger-scale projects, we're gonna get the...because the developers on the bigger-scale projects that are paying 2,000-something or other, they also can get away with buying a $240 tree and sending it to the nursery. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So if we don't let this move forward, then a developer is basically gonna buy these cheap trees and send them to the nursery. It's not gonna incentivize them any more than they are now. It's just as easy for them to go to the local nursery and buy a tree and hand it to the nursery than it is for us...for them to hand us a stack of cash. So this doesn't do what we want it to do in terms of really changing policy. This is basically solving one problem that you guys brought before us in terms of this in-lu fee. And so hopefully, we can move forward with this and not hold all this other stuff hostage. Although I agree 100% that we should increase these fees, and we want you to come back with that study. But my fear is, if we do...if we hold it hostage and we don't, it's not like this is leverage on the department and they're gonna move any faster. What's gonna make you guys move faster is the fact that we're putting money in the budget.
Budget.
And we're putting an extra $2.2 million in the budget to do just these things. So, one way or the other, we're gonna get you to do them. The question is whether we make this policy somehow contingent as if this is leverage on you, and it's not. This is just something, a minor thing, that you guys thought would assist and ultimately get us more trees and not let the big developers get away with buying a $200 tree and handing it to a nursery. Now, at the very least, they have to spend two grand or whatever you figured out to get three years' worth of maintenance. Not the best solution, but it's better than nothing. Don't, you know, I'd say, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good when it comes to this request from the department to have this in-lu fee. With that, I will close. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Did you need to make an announcement? Madam Clerk, go right ahead.
Three votes are required on this matter. We will take two votes. The first vote will be on items amending motion 7A. The second vote will be on amending motion 7B. And then the third vote will be on the entire matter as amended.
Mr. Blumenfield.
On 7A, I'm gonna ask for a no vote. This 7A effectively delays this for a couple of hours. It was submitted today. We discussed this in committee, but it's before us today. But effectively, 7A would kill this amendment and not allow us to do the in-lu for several years, for at least, as I said, 18 months. So I'm asking for a no vote on 7A.
All right, so let's...so the first vote is 7A. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Six ayes, eight noes.
Now, Madam Clerk.
The next vote is on amending motion 7B, and that requests that the ordinance be changed to require council approval of board determinations of the locations for trees planted using the in-lu fees based on the location of the project triggering the development tree planting requirement or the tree removal permit triggering the Public Works tree planting requirement as well as the need for additional trees in an area.
Okay, so now let's prepare to vote on this item, 7B. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
12 ayes, two noes.
Now, let's vote on...
This next vote, the third vote, will be on the matter as amended by 7B.
Okay, so on this item, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, one no.
Okay. All right, that brings us where? There's been a request for reconsideration on item 12. Is that correct?
I believe there is a request for reconsideration of item 12.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now we're going to vote again on item 12. Hold on one second. Now we're gonna vote on it again. Let's...on the actual issue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, for clarification on item 7, that ordinance will be held over one week because the vote was not unanimous.
Fourth with on 12 again? All right. That brings us where?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
They're posted and referred. Announcements? If all could please rise for adjourning motions. All in the council chambers. I'm looking to my right side. That would be Mr. Krikorian's side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. Look to my left, which would be Mr. Harris Dawson's side. Don't see any adjourning motions there. With that said, members, this meeting's adjourned.